Statistic planning and development department submitting resolution relating to land transfers requested pursuant to certain economic development corporation in the city of Detroit Tiger Stadium, property redevelopment project. Motion to discuss. We can bring the developers and others that are involved in this project to the table. Welcome back. That was a slow walk to the table there. Start with introduction, start with my left.
Marty Turay with DEGC.
Thomas Lynn, President of the Old Tiger Stadium Conservancy.
Tim Ritchie, the Chief Executive Officer of Detroit Police Athletic League.
Matthew Walton, Mayor's Office.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Derek Head, LPD.
Mr. Head or others, if you could get a report and update where we're at today.
To the Chair. Last week, we had a fruitful discussion regarding Tiger Stadium. I think we made progress with the development along Michigan and Trumbull with Larson Group. There were some remaining questions around community access for the PAL portion of the project, the actual field itself, community access as well as information and data around the field versus astroturf issue. Councilman Sheffield also had requested to see the development agreement between both parties. And so, we are here to present our case for all of those issues, except for the development agreement is still like 99% there, it'll be done tomorrow. We will definitely get that around to all council members. But the other issues, we are here to discuss today. So, without further ado, would you like to hear from PAL or Derek, I know you've run a report as well?
Let's first hear from PAL.
Sure, yeah, thanks a lot for taking the time again. It's our pleasure to be here. Once again, we're very excited about this opportunity to redevelop what we know is an iconic location in the city of Detroit. I think that throughout all of this process, we've gone into it with much respect for what we're trying to get down here and the property and what it means to so many people. I think we've had a couple of objectives. One is to do our very best to retain the authenticity of the site, the very best we can. And secondly, to create a complex that not only Detroit PAL kids and families can enjoy, but the entire Detroit region can enjoy for generations to come. And that's what our goal and our mission had been throughout the entire time working on the project. I know last time we were here, there were a couple of specific questions that came up, and so I'll go ahead and dive right into those questions that we have. I think the first one related to public access. And I had shared earlier that, you know, our desire is to get as many people programming at that site as possible. We want to definitely invite folks to come in and enjoy the site, not only Detroit PAL kids and families, but folks around the region can come and enjoy the site, and certainly want to make it available to as many people as we can because we know the interest is down there. Specifically, there was a question around the opportunity to visit the site, whether that opportunity would be free, whether the site would be made accessible to people. And so, we have begun working on a facility schedule that I have shared with the DEGC, and so they're taking a look at it now. And so, there's a lot to work through as it relates to that, but I can say today that our desire is to have folks visit the site. And so, we're prepared to say today that we will offer at least 15 hours per week of free access to the public to walk into the site, to enjoy the site, to walk the stadium, walk the concourse, walk through the dugouts, walk on the field, and just generally experience the memories that so many people have of the old Tiger Stadium site.
Can we get that in writing?
Sure.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, and I've got something prepared that I can share with you guys today.
Through the Chair, as Tim said or mentioned, he has shared that information in an Excel sheet chart that shows hours of the weekdays, when that is available, and when the afternoon program, and when the access to the community is accessible. So, we will definitely send that around with the development agreement tomorrow.
I think there's still some work to be done as it relates to, you know, 3 to 5 o'clock, what happens, 9 to 12, what happens. I think that, you know, just, you know, our thought is to offer up at least 15 hours per week for the general public to access the site, to visit the site. There will also be times where community groups and others can permit the site, can rent the site, in addition to Detroit PAL programming. So, we know that there's a regional interest here. You know, I think that on the one hand, we certainly want to give Detroit kids the chance to play there, which is ultimately, you know, a big portion of what we hope to accomplish there. We also appreciate that there's others that want to enjoy it too. And so, you know, I think that we're doing our very best to make this iconic location available and open to lots of different folks, and I think in particular, the hours for folks just to walk in and visit will be meaningful to those folks that want to come in and visit Old Tiger Stadium.
Reverend Benson.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the compromise. My concern is that you have a field that's going to be primarily used and programmed for youth, and now you're looking at opening up the play area to the public. Now, we know that there are unfortunately a number of adults who prey on children, so my concern is, how do you plan to secure the youth from the general public, which is not going to be vetted? So, how do you secure to ensure that we don't have any conflicts of interest with the youth versus adults who may come in contact with them, who may be unvetted? That's my concern.
Well, I think that's a fair concern. You know, part of the plan would require security guards at the site, and so that'll obviously be an expense that PAL will have to, you know, be able to manage and handle. So, part of our yearly fundraising efforts will be to retain security so that we can ensure that the safety of the park and those that enter the park are, you know, not causing any trouble, whether it's any vandalism or anything else on the park. You know, so I think it's certainly something that we need to manage well throughout the days because most definitely, the last thing we want is for an adult to enter that had ulterior motives as it relates to the children that are on the play field.
Okay. And just want to applaud PAL for taking on the additional financial burden of opening up this play space to the public, when you have to protect your primary users of that space from those who may be inclined to gravitate towards an area where they know children will be present. So, I'm just going to continue to express that concern and applaud you for being willing to take on the extra financial burden of ensuring that the community can come and access that for 15 hours a week. Because I'm also hoping that those who are asking for that type of access are also willing to give to PAL to ensure that that type of access can be maintained in perpetuity. It's always easy to talk about what you want, but when it's time to cut a check, it may be a little more difficult. So, I'm hoping that people are willing to support this worthy cause and the public's opportunity to have open space, because it's not free.
I appreciate that, Councilman, thank you so much, yeah. And we'll certainly have a donation box that's available as people walk into the entrance, and we'll have some information about Detroit PAL, our goals, our mission, and the opportunity to contribute. So, that's, we take that to note, and I appreciate the comments, thank you. I think, secondly, there was a question regarding the field surface, and so I'm happy to address that question as well. I think that, you know, our goal and intention, I'm sorry.
Before you jump over to that, the community access point, Reverend Benson, to the Chair. The community access, though, would not be during the scheduled hours of some of the programs, correct? Or would it be in conjunction at the same time? Or is it going to be community access when there is no programming going on in the field? Just want to be clear how that works.
It'll probably be both. So, I think during the school year, I think the goal during the school year would be have something like 9 o'clock to 12 o'clock, Monday through Friday, where the site is open, or 10 to 1, or something like that, which is the 15 hours. During the summer hours, though, I would imagine and I would expect that there will be children that are at the site while the site is accessible. And the thinking there is that, so for instance, if we're running summer camps, part of the development project includes the Leadership Center. And so, my expectation is that during the lunchtime and when we're doing some leadership courses, some life skill courses, those would occur in the Leadership Center, and so then the field would be open to the public to access. So, I think that during the summer, there will be occasions where the kids are within the complex, but not necessarily on the field, although maybe in the concourse. So, I think there will be times, I mean, I, it's most definitely there will be times when children of PAL, in summer camps or otherwise, will be in the complex with the facility open to the public to come and visit.
Sorry, sir, you were, Mr. Ritchie, you were speaking on the turf.
Yeah, sure, so the field surface. So, again, our intention and our goal has always been to program the site heavily. We want to maximize the usage of the site. We think that, we know that there are thousands of kids that want a chance to play there. So, we've done diligent research on this subject. We've researched the natural grass and the durability of natural grass, and the number of hours that an individual or a team's sports athletics competitions can be played on natural surfaces. We have consulted with Dr. Rogers, who's a turf expert at Michigan State University. We've done research and been able to identify a report that was done by University of Cal Berkeley in 2010. We've pulled research from the Sport Turf Management Association, and all of those entities will say pretty conclusively that programming more than 20 hours a week is going to cause damage to the turf. And in particular, you can't play there in the rain, and you can't play there in March and November, you gotta let it settle. And so, for those reasons, we have decided to choose a synthetic turf surface to go onto the field. We know that we'll be able to get upwards of 10 hours a day of programming on the site. There are studies that show that there is no increased chance of injury with synthetic turf, that there is, you know, no difference in playability of turf. In fact, there are reports that show that the playability is better on synthetic turf. And so, and long-term maintenance, we think, will be reduced with the use of synthetic turf as well. So, that's been the selection. We do know that there is quite a bit of community concern and national concern around the use of the rubber pellet infill for the synthetic turf surface. And that, frankly, that rubber pellet is what's caused a lot of the concern around the synthetic surface as it relates to potential cancer risk. There are no conclusive studies that will show that, there's no evidence, scientific evidence that supports that fact. We haven't found any, and the reports that we have shows that there is no conclusive evidence. However, the safety of the children is of the utmost concern for us. It always has been, it always will be. And so, we're definitely happy that there are alternative infill solutions to the rubber pellet surface. And so, I also have information related to the variety of alternatives to the rubber pellets, and I'm happy to say and can say definitively today that we will seek out the very best infill for the surface, and that the rubber pellets will not be included on the surface at Old Tiger Stadium. So, we think that we've mitigated any concern around the carcinogens at the site, and I think the studies will show that the safety of the turf as it relates to injuries is equal, if not better, to the natural grass, and the durability and playability, I don't think is a question. And so, for those reasons, we've chosen to go with a synthetic turf surface. And so, I guess that probably concludes the two outstanding points that I had to address today, or tonight.
Were you able to address specifically a cost breakdown comparison between the grass, natural grass and turf?
Yeah, we did. And so, the one-time installation-
Is there something you can present on?
Yes, yeah, I do, yeah, I do. I have it here, and I'm happy to show that to you today. And if you'd like, I can distribute that. Would you like to see it now?
If you have some extra copies?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be helpful.
So, we did, we have done studies, and you can see what we have here is the cost breakdown for grass versus turf. This was compiled by the Sports Millennium Technologies Group, and it was provided, it was compiled with information from the Sports Turf Management Association. Sports Turf Management Association works with both natural surfaces and synthetic surfaces. And you can see here that as it relates to the one-time installation fee and the first year of maintenance, the cost is pretty similar. You know, it's, when you take into account the necessary equipment, whether it's the irrigation system that has to be created with a natural surface, and, you know, the equipment that's required and the materials that are required, it's pretty similar in the first year. However, you can see that over the course of 10 years, there's quite a bit of difference as it relates to natural grass. It's much more expensive to manage over the course of time. However, I think it's important to note that Detroit PAL's decision as it relates to synthetic turf is not a cost decision. It really doesn't have as much to do with the budget as it has to do with the durability of the surface and the opportunity to get kids on the field throughout the entire school year, as many kids, adults, outside groups as we can to play on the field. And so, we think that there is certainly a case for the reduced cost of synthetic turf. Really, the decision has revolved around the durability of the surface. And frankly, for us, you know, that's the most important, I think, determining factor in this decision.
Do you see any opportunity for compromise? I mean, I'm looking at, you know, these breakdowns. I mean, do you see any opportunity to provide any kind of a hybrid of sorts? I mean, are there any programs out there that you've seen? I think there's a huge case to be made, you know, to keep this natural grass. And so, you know, we could essentially, I mean, I'd like to see some more data, maybe, you know, if this moves today, you know, by Tuesday. But have any other areas been explored to look at? Any other opportunities to bring in natural grass? I mean, I know durability and sustainability, right, is the big, is a huge deal here. But I'm just, you know, wanting to get some more, you know, from you in terms of if there's any, like, hybrid of any kind to keep natural grass on the site.
There is a hybrid surface. However, the same issue arises with the hybrid. It cannot withstand the kind of activity on the site that we envisioned. So, we've done a lot of research on this, and we've looked at a lot of different alternatives. And we certainly understand that there's a passion at that site. But even the hybrid cannot withstand the kind of durability that we're looking at when it comes to participation. We know that there are thousands of kids in Detroit PAL that are looking forward to the opportunity of playing at what will become one of the finest youth athletic complexes in the region. And with all of the challenges that kids in Detroit have these days as it relates to after-school programming and clean and safe places to play, you know, we believe that allowing the opportunity for as many kids as possible to play there is of the utmost importance. And so, while we certainly appreciate the history of the site, and I think what is important to note as well is, our goal, as I mentioned earlier, was to retain the authenticity there. And so, I think that we have fought long and hard alongside of our friends at the Old Tiger Stadium Conservancy and others to retain the full dimensions of the site. And I certainly appreciate the Mayor's Office working along with us, the DEGC, and the Larson Group working along with us to retain the original dimensions of the site. And I'll note that there hasn't been a ballpark with this kind of history in the country that's retained those original dimensions. So, we think that's significant as it relates to authenticity. The only other, the other two things I would note in this regard are that the original orientation of the field will remain, that home plate stays where home plate was, the flagpole stays where the flagpole has been. We're going to shiny up that flagpole, and we're going to make it a beacon for those of us who remember Tiger Stadium. We also intend to highlight men and women of character at the site that meant so much, and the memories of that location for those people who want to visit and see and recall all of those glory days at that location. And so, folks that made such a difference in Detroit, in the culture of Detroit, men and women. So, we believe that there are a lot of elements of authenticity of the site, there are a lot of the memories that were retained at the site, and doing that, we're still looking forward to what we think will become one of the finest youth athletic complexes that will be programmed heavily on behalf of the children of the city, and frankly, the entire Detroit region.
Reverend Benson.
Looking at your chart, proper maintenance of the natural grass on a field, when's the last time this field was resodded? How old is the grass of this location?
I can't tell you.
No, did Prince Fielder play on this grass? I'm being serious right now.
Oh, well, Cecil, this is, I mean, the answer is, of course, there was a demolition there, and then the field really turned to substantial weeds, and it's been maintained. I mean, it hasn't been resodded probably at least 15 years, and what's there is probably only a remnant of the grass that really was there when it was played because it had gone substantially to weeds. And the Naivon Field Grounds Group worked hard on the site to make it sort of a public park. I don't think they really resodded it, but they worked on the field and fertilized and so forth.
Another question. I know that we play at Belle Isle on the World Cup side from, what was it, 1990, whatever year the World Cup was in, was here. And so, that grass has been laid out on Belle Isle. Is there an opportunity to preserve the posterity for the posterity of future baseball players to remove that side and place it at another baseball field in the city of Detroit to continue with that use? Does this sound like it's going to be feasible to continue with natural grass at that site? But to lose that opportunity to move it someplace else? Has anybody looked at that? Could we relocate that? We've got a brand new baseball field coming online at Riverside Park. And there are a number of bills in the city of Detroit that may like to put out a sign indicating Naivon Field sod, natural grass from Old Tiger Stadium. I mean, that, to me, sounds like it'd be a great marketing opportunity for a Little League or just a field in the city of Detroit, or type or current Co-America Park. Maybe they'd like to take a piece of that.
Through the Chair, I think that's a very creative idea, and that should definitely be explored. We have not looked into that, hadn't thought of it, to be frank. So, I think that's a great suggestion. We will certainly work with PAL and the Old Tiger Stadium Conservancy to explore that option.
And I guess my other question is going to be, so is it really about the location of the grass, or would preserving the grass be a reasonable solution to this concern from those who are in the area? If it was relocated somewhere else in a close proximity, I mean, is that a-
I don't think we can speak for the community that has risen this issue, but I think that to Chairman Leland's point about compromise, I think that's at least getting somewhere. I also would like to second Mr. Ritchie's suggestions about the community advocacy for the 325 feet down right field line, as well as the flagpole. That's also been a compromise as well. Six, seven months ago, that was not the issue, it was not the case. We had 300 feet down right field line, and the flagpole was going to be moved because we wanted to see 65 feet, 70 feet of development along Trumbull. And so, eight months ago, we weren't talking about grass, we were talking about preserving the right field line and the full dimensions of this historic baseball field. And so, that was also a compromise that the DEGC and myself worked on with the Old Tiger Stadium Conservancy and PAL, along with the community, to restore the full dimensions.
Mr. Chair.
I just think it may be worth a conversation to the Detroit Tiger organization to say, hey, can you all see your way to helping to preserve this field and replace something somewhere at current Co-America Park? Maybe look at taking it up and maintaining it. Is there a plan, if this gets approved, when would you look to dig up the field to place down new?
The mid to late March.
Okay. So, the season will start again, and it would be, we'll come out of hibernation that time, wouldn't we? Maybe, maybe not?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think part of, you know, part of what we need to be cognizant of is the HUD funding and the sunset on that. And so, you know, our need to break ground in March is a real date. And so, you know, as it relates to the preservation of the field, I'm not, I can't speak to that. You know, I think that it is a creative idea. You know, I think the expense of it would be something that, you know, that folks would really have to take up and consider, but not to say that it's not, you know, something that's untenable.
Just one last item, and this may be a great opportunity for fundraising, opportunity for PAL as well. I mean, sell square feet of that field for posterity. I would love to have someone Naivon Field in our front yard or backyard say, hey, I've got Tiger Stadium right in my yard. I mean, I'm sure that people would pay to do that, to help fund programming or help fund the security that you now have to, a fee you have to bear. So, there are ways, I believe, to maintain it. It may not be in the current location. I think there's creative ways that we could keep that side in the city of Detroit for future use and/or a way to help fund future programs for Detroit's use.
I think it's a great idea. Yeah, I mean, I definitely applaud you for being creative about it. I think it's a great idea, and certainly, you know, would enjoy the opportunity to, you know, continue that conversation.
So, for this to move forward, I think that there's some outstanding questions out there regarding the, specifically the grass versus the turf that you might want to provide if this were to move forward by Tuesday. I'm looking at a memo from Member Costin Lopez, I believe this is her district. She submitted four questions, and I would recommend, you know, that you follow up with maybe some written comments if this were to move forward.
Yeah, no, thank you, appreciate that, yeah.
Let me just, let me just read these off real quick. Some of this has come up today already, just in natural conversation about, you know, the cost, you know, of installing natural grass versus artificial turf, explanation of organic material, providing a written plan for public access, which I know we talked about earlier. And then, you know, additional green space and placemaking activities as well. So, you know, this has been submitted to the clerk. It would be ideal for you to make sure to get some of that information submitted in writing.
Yeah, and I'm happy to provide that today. I did receive a copy of that, and so I was, you know, I understood what some of the questions that Councilwoman Lopez had, and so I've got that today that I can provide in terms of the first three questions. The fourth question, you know, we'll go back with the design team. I think there's certainly an opportunity with, at the corner of Michigan and Cochran, to put some benches down there for people to enjoy. I think that, you know, I can't speak for the Larson Realty Group and what their intentions are in Michigan and Trumbull, but I would imagine that there's opportunities there as well. But the other three I do have in writing, and I'm happy to share those today.
Did you have some written comments you wanted to share? Is that what you said?
Sure, yeah, well, I've got sort of all the different alternative infills to the rubber pellets, and I can provide that for you. I've given you the maintenance schedule and the facility schedule, I can hand to you as well in terms of what we're contemplating. Yeah, yeah, we can go ahead. I might as well just go ahead and give you the packet here, so.
That'd be great.
Yep.
How many copies do you have?
There are, let's see here, I've got four, I've got a couple more here in my folder. I got six.
And then again to the chat team. So, to make break ground in March, this would be needed to move forward?
Correct. Through the Chair, correct.
Colleagues, is there some interest in moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I'll support moving forward. I know Mr. Head and LPD submitted a report, and there were about six or so questions, actually nine questions. For the sake of time, you don't have to respond to them, but they were really good questions I would like some responses to. So if you can submit answers to those questions right prior to Tuesday, that would be helpful as well.
Through the-
Through the chair. Are there any, real quickly, are there any on there that rise to the top of any, like, real severe issue? I mean, all your questions are usually good, Mr. Head, but any in particular that, like, you know, we should be aware of?
Well, Mr. Chair, well, Mr. Chair, as you said earlier, in the natural course of conversation, most of our questions were addressed, and we also, we also went into extensive research into chrome rubber, which is now moot. But however, I just want to point out a couple of things real quickly. It was raised that the HUD grant was restricted. One of the individuals in public comment last week stated that the HUD funding was restricted to natural grass. We actually reviewed the actual award letter back in, from 2009. We found no evidence of that. We were asked to take a look at artificial fields to see if they were safe. We saw many studies, but the Environmental Protection Agency, they actually came out and said, artificial fields, they found that there were actually less, fewer injuries on these types of fields with some of the type of infill such as chrome rubber. But we also found there were some other alternatives such as cork and coconut husk, and I'm sure Mr. Ritchie has shared some of those items with you. So pretty much so, most of our concerns were addressed.
Did any of your research find out information regarding any environmentally conscious or any reduction in energy use, any kind between the two?
Mr. Chair, as Mr. Ritchie said, there are no definitive studies which actually state that chrome rubber is a carcinogen. So school is still out on that. So no, the question, the answer is-
So we've been on this topic for a while now, I think it's time to give this thing a try here. While I appreciate, you know, everyone's passion on this issue, I want to make sure that we don't get stalled on this, but, you know, that there's an interest in an opportunity for further investigation on potential compromise. You know, if that's, you know, preserving the grass for some other use. I mean, you know, there's a huge community here in Detroit that, you know, is all about, you know, reuse and salvage. And so this is not unheard of to do these types of things, and especially with the historic, you know, nature, you can't put a value on that field. And so, you know, if we can put a little commitment letter together that speaks to that issue specifically, I think that would be helpful, that you will do everything in your power in looking at, you know, creatively how to reuse the actual field. Is that something that you could commit to by this Tuesday?
I think that, I'm happy to look at how the field could be reused. I think the only concern I would have is the expense of lifting the field and moving it and then laying it back down, and then essentially you've got to let it resod. I mean, there's a lot of work to that.
Sure.
And I don't know that we could commit to the expense of that. However, we'd be happy to commit to the, you know, creative thinking around how best to, you know, reuse the sod.
Through Mr. Benson.
Sure.
Okay.
I remember you mentioned cost wasn't an issue.
As it relates to the durability of that site, the cost is an issue, but when it comes down to getting the kids to play at that location, that's our highest concern.
All right. Let's keep, keep the conversations and the open lines of communication open on this Motion to approve line number five, move to formal?
So move.
Moved by Member Sheffield. We didn't see no objection. That motion stands approved.
Mr. Chair, through the chair.
Member Benson.
You all could just Tuesday have a, we should say you made it, reach out to Tiger's organization, see if they'd be interested in supporting the solution of either preserving, relocating, donating. I know the city of Detroit would be interested in taking that, they just don't have, we don't have the funds to lift it up and then relocate it. But if somebody could donate funds towards that effort, the city would be willing to take on and relocate that sod somewhere else in the city at a playfield.
Through the chair, that call will be made tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Get some sleep tonight. I don't know about that.
Without objection, we'll take lines number 24, 25 together. Should wrap up our line items. 24, submitting resolution authorizing Morgan Waterfront Estates, real property located south of Freud between Saint Jane and Lycastis, sale by development agreement.